Das ist auch das beste Team, was sie wählen können.
Yo!
Ey.
Yo Todd, did you win?
Best not to ask.
Okay.
Playing with fucking chimps.
Because that was a sick run, you know, 9-0.
I think I got 10-0 today, but then I lost the last 2 or 3.
I just watched the game before, it was pretty disappointing because you smashed your site.
Yeah, I think it's like some Chinese players. Like this Crybaby guy, he goes Blood Mage mass Jaro's.
Yeah Crybaby, oh my god.
So he's uncarryable, and then this hairy guy is terrible, and then we had Zhao as well doing absolutely nothing last game, so...
Yeah, Zhao is trolling hard, I think.
Yeah.
Need change team?
Okay.
Human and we are ready, I think. Starbuck is muted, I don't know.
Um, no, I'm here.
Alright.
So you... Now Starbuck Elf?
Yeah. Yeah, on this map.
Uh, Shocker, can you mute please? We have an echo.
Yeah, I can.
Okay, uh...
Guys, ready?
Yeah, we're ready. Let's make sure when the game starts, we don't make the second call too fast. Shocker, please, can you mute?
Pom, pom, pom.
Shocker, please? Okay, I would just mute myself.
That's weird, Franz said it's good.
I'm with Todd. Yeah. You can switch calls, guys.
No, like let's talk first. Well, I guess on this map, we kinda know, right?
Yeah, we do.
Just make sure you type, like if you wanna do middle, or if you need time, or something, like it's good to give an update, because otherwise, we have no idea how the other side is going.
Okay. So, good luck, boys.
So...
Can you ping me your creep, bro?
Uh, yeah. Um, I do Fountain, then Merk Camp, and this. And then maybe Green, and then maybe I move out after, so it's like very, very slow. So you should do all the camps inside of your quarter, basically.
What?
You should do maybe...
Shocker.
I will not let you down this time, promise.
Uh, yeah, I think do the green into Merk Camp, and then this orange, and then do your expo.
Yeah.
And scout with wolf when you do your expo, so that they don't catch you. Yeah, basically, I'll open one base.
I would go creep and fight if I do all 4 camps, I think.
Sorry? Oh yeah, that's the goal, is that like we both get 4, and then when we start fighting, we just fucking wreck.
Alright.
I get 4 so fast with this creep route, like it's insane.
Yeah. It's power creep. Feeling hot today. Super hyped. Is it overkill if I start spikes now?
Yeah. They're playing with this pom-pom guy.
Yeah. Making shop, so you can buy clarity this later, I think.
Yeah.
I buy one for you, I think. Stay in your base. The Wisp here, careful.
Yeah, I see. I didn't even detonate.
Oh lord. They never do, for some reason.
As they're not on the way, okay, we do the small green, then...
They're here.
One small extra camp. Oh, they're on the way?
At work else, you can go mass footman, I think.
Yeah, I already am. Put something near this tavern. Okay, finish the camp, and let's meet here. I have a Hellstone if you need.
Yeah.
Send something to the tavern.
Standing, it's there.
I give you Hellstone. Let's pull this camp and do it, they might be doing it.
Ah, Wisp.
What Wisp? It's a TC. Fucking fly with this.
You can buy Panda, Panda, Panda.
No, not yet, not yet.
Yeah.
Let's do the expo real quick.
I'm still chasing.
Yeah, I see.
Lots of low HP.
I'm 4.
Nice.
Do you have wood?
Yeah.
Yeah, send me a bunch. Fucking double Sanctum plus Expo.
I'm level 4 already.
Yeah, I see. Okay, let's do the shop.
More creeping or what?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We just play defensive, like, because we have Brilliance 2 now, so we just let our heroes replenish. They're gonna have to use a shitload of clarities and stuff. By the time they come back, we should be ready to fight again. Maybe pull back our first heroes a little bit? Okay, I'm actually gonna delay the expo, because I wanna have close to 50, because if they come back and I have expo going up, no units.
I think the Nidalee's expo too.
Yeah, but it doesn't matter, like, we're just gonna have... We're just gonna be too strong in fights. Even if we have delayed expo, as long as we just win every fight.
I buy healing scroll, I think, yeah.
Easy game.
I'm waiting for healing scroll.
My panda's almost 3.
Or you want to creep more?
Hey, let's do the red.
3P maybe, perfect.
Dude, my panda's almost 3, what the fuck? I'm gonna roast these fools.
I have heal scroll on the Shadow, too.
Yeah. Send the Shadow in, because my panda is... I get 3, then I will pull it back. Oh my god, so be masked.
Alright.
I take the A-10? You're there? Oh no, it's Skellies.
I'm carrying some Shamans for this, bro. And that last, because I'm not... This one as well, I'm not?
No, no.
I'm level 3, let's go, let's go.
You're almost 3 as well, I see on the Shadow.
Yeah. They're here. Oh, he went shockwave, that's good.
Nice. That was their last call, I think. We're gonna wreck their backline.
Itty.
Let's go, champ! I have expo running.
I bought my bot.
Oh my god, haha, so close.
Check this one, real quick.
Yeah. I'm gonna cancel. He's not moving his fucking things.
Oh, his expo, yeah. Lol, he didn't mine his expo.
It just started, yeah, but he just took it, I think.
Yeah, true. I still have to have Hellstone, by the way.
Yeah, nice.
I'm buying healing scroll, yeah. Oh my, really good, yeah, running expo, sorry. Yeah, full ban.
Well, that's a TP, I think it's...
And maybe fat? They have no DC.
We can skip.
They have expo. They are 3, not TP. 3 players for them. Yeah, I lost quite a bit.
Yeah, because they went to creep the other side.
You have a few gold for TP and stuff. I can send you lumber.
Oh yeah?
You have a bit of gold?
Uh, not much, to be honest.
Alright, then I just save money. Yeah, middle, middle, oh fuck, they could bring middle. We should go, maybe we go here.
Yeah.
Or we help them.
Yeah, they kill the keeper.
Yeah, I tried to open mid.
Oh, you wanna go mid, or you wanna counter? We got the expo, I guess, we can just go mid.
Yeah, let's help them, go, go, go.
Start healing them ASAP.
Better. Nice. Let's go mana, get mana, and then we can push after. Alright. You want? Can we go bottom?
Yeah, we can. Let's go there.
Yeah. I mean, they have next on the top. I'm going for the bottom side.
We should have gone together, but yeah, it's okay, we can group. Let's group up fast. Okay, Orc is counterattacking.
But guess what?
Just kill the next, if they have. I think I will TP. He's gonna make me TP, I think. Okay, TP now to defend against Orc.
What?
I'm headed to you.
Yeah, I'm waiting. Checking if he's making expo.
Almost 5 Orc mage.
They didn't remake the expo.
Yeah, yeah. Go left, go left, wait for me.
Yeah, I wait for you. I have double heal scroll, by the way.
Yeah, I have one too.
It's fight.
Castle is like 70%, then I will get knights.
You just want heal scroll?
Uh, I'm waiting as much as I can. Fucking keeper at the back.
Yeah. He has no TP, by the way. Dead. It's not...
If you have wood, I need some. I got Brilliance 3, spam everything.
Yeah. DC has no TP, my friend. DC is naked.
Let's go, champ! Yeah, we win both sides again. This map, we never lose it.
Yeah. I need to make a phone call, be right back.
Okay.
GG.
Let's go, champ! I take it top point 12 as well? Fly played TC Shockwave again, by the way.
Haha, interesting.
Again, it's not up.
Yeah, now it is.
Fuck me, I missed the game name again. Ah, it's 3, okay.
Um, yeah, double Orc or Elf?
Uh, Francis said he needs to make a phone call. Are they gonna struggle to ban this guy again? Jesus Christ, man. He's not gonna leave, he's a fucking troll.
He left. So, Elf or, um, 2 Orc?
Uh, let's see when Francis comes back, what he says. I go to toilet, one second.
I'm back.
Okay, Francis, what do you think? 2 Orc or Elf?
I don't know the map, what's the game name?
Porter Roulette.
And what is the game name?
Uh, the lobby got destroyed, because Yumeiko is relogging.
I see. And Porter Roulette. And you can, I mean...
Keep in mind, we lost on this map against Elf.
Yeah, I mean, it's very easy to creep the expo at the corner.
Okay, I go Elf.
Yeah, I think we should. You play Elf 11.
Wow, thanks.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
So we don't have to commit too hard on leaves. You guys were creeping mid against 4 players.
Easy. We were like, Tom of Powers were laying on the ground, we were, um, discussing...
Waiting for Keeper 5 to get level 6.
Okay, back.
Uh, yeah, so Todd, I play Elf again.
Alright, I found the game.
You had hill wave first, this game, uh?
Yes.
You have spikes though, that's the question.
I got it on the way to tier 2 already.
Oh shit.
Did you have hill wave first, or no, this game?
Yes, hill wave.
Nice.
I was just kidding, Todd, that was the first thing Todd checked when you SHK'd out.
I didn't, actually.
You know, this is like that peer pressure now, when your shadow comes out, it's like being in school, there's a big bully behind you.
Well, if he picks hex accidentally, I feel like his modem is gonna coincidentally disconnect him from the game. Before I can realize.
Monkey ass.
Amping with evidence.
Alright, let's go.
Yeah, let's go. Map, this fucking map. I've never been to the middle on this map, not even once in my life.
Dogshit, no?
Uh, by the way, guys, the last time, I mean yesterday, you talked about it. When I'm inside position on this map, and I have a Orc ally, should I do the ghoul expend? I could do it.
Yeah, go for it.
Or you can creep that corner, and I make the expo there.
Yeah, let's talk about exactly who expos where here, when you...
Yeah, now... But I'm, now I'm on the side.
Yeah, I go expo, right, and you go tier 3, maybe?
Okay, and I play one base, maybe, Starbuck?
No, go expo.
You think, no matter what?
Yeah, because I feed you.
But if I get... Okay, so I get tower, I get...
Fast.
I get tower and a straight expo?
Uh, yeah, straight expo, yes.
Okay, so you guys make the other call, you can...
I'll just play one base, and I'll expo here later, when I creep it.
Yeah. Should I go rifles? So we have rifles with MGs?
Let's see, let's see the combo.
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh shit. Or maybe we'll get better spawn.
Yeah. 2-0, pog. But yeah, rifle and MG is very strong. Well, we can also play, I usually like to do, when I play one base, I like to do 50 supply bears, and then I go to mountain giants to 64.
Yeah.
I break with 2 MGs. I think bears on 50 are insane.
Yeah. If you play MGs though, I really think you should retrain when you have like 60, 70 supply. It's so sick, because anything that's melee just gets wrecked in the fight.
I agree, I agree. That's a nice idea. Thornzora.
Yeah, it's difficult to see how big the value is from Thorns, Aura level 3, 101 and 22, because it's never seen.
In FFA, like, I've watched, uh, quite a few games, and then...
I mean, it's strong, it's very strong, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like in FFA, when Undead plays against Night Elf, Undead has no chance with Garg against Hippos, when there is Thorns, basically. It just gets completely wrecked.
It also affects, it also affects this fight.
Yeah, it affects Hippos against Garg.
Okay, I'm so bad, okay.
Same as Vampora.
Yeah, Vampora, I know, but Thorns, Aura, okay? That's crazy.
One thing that's strange for me is why Bad Rider cannot attack air, the tusk can be cut.
Uh, the game is...
It's 6.
5, 5, 0, 5.
That's a nice start, but that was like one of a better maps, now it's like one of a weaker maps, technically.
Well, let's see.
I think we got kind of lucky, though, human and elf on the same side, and I mean, it's not bad, but with the expo. I think it has better synergy with elf expo corner and human expo corner.
Yeah, I think so too. But, so I just do expend if you're on the side with me, Francis, because you're Orc, then I'm inside.
You creep the expo, maybe, and I make it.
Yeah, but just if I'm on the side.
Yeah.
If I'm in a spot, it's very good to ghoul expend, and then double creep fiends, and I can buy clarities. I have level 3 Death Knight with ghoul creeping even faster, and I can also feed you for Beastery and Tier 3, and god, my shit.
Sure.
But it's just in case I'm in middle and you're on the side.
Yeah. Yeah, it would be better, the one inside expend.
I think the best is really human and elf in the middle.
Yeah. Boom, boom, re-download, Warcraft 3 champions.
Yeah, actually, like, if we spawn together, Starbuck and we do the expo, I was gonna do here, I actually think this is very good, but I never do it on ladder, because it takes too much synchronizing, and people would not send, like, maybe sometimes they wouldn't send me resources.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, true, ladder team game, it's different.
And you also get my wisps in your main base.
Yeah, I mean, if I fast tower, I shouldn't even need a wisp, but it's good to have one, just in case there is two wolves.
Did you guys like my shop on the top?
I didn't get used. It's better if you build it where there is a spot near my expo, you know, like the green ground.
Yeah, but you built your expo there, and then it was no place to build anything. I think.
Uh, no, I built expo on spot.
Uh, you built something in front, they cut.
Yeah, shop, but I cancelled it.
Okay.
Okay, he's in. Ready?
Nice.
Uh, last time on this map, Fly went Shockwave, just so you guys know, I think it saved like the Storm for Wellspring, I think it was.
Yeah, last game, he went Shockwave as well.
Yeah, I expect Shockwave, I think.
Same.
Shit, I almost wanna go Demon Hunter then.
If you don't get him on your side, it's wasteful.
What if I early scout?
Does he lame, Fly, or he play... He tries to lame, or he plays standard unit?
He plays docked off, usually.
Oh yeah, he doesn't really lame. I mean, yeah, I guess, maybe.
I'll scout early.
I'm with Todd, mate, or human.
Okay.
Okay, good luck, guys. Starbuck, I can clean it for you, or you want it?
Uh...
By yourself, I can creep it.
Yeah, creep it for me.
Okay.
You guys switch calls, or should we?
Oh yeah, yeah, we switch.
Do we play, basically, like the last time, just to kill the fight?
Yeah, I will creep Merk Camp first.
Yeah, yeah.
And I will tower up, even though I could take the gamble, not to tower, because Fly has been doing, uh, TC Shockwave. I think I will get scout tower, and I will not upgrade it unless they come harass.
Yeah, I think he should, um, he might change things up, because he lost 3 times in a row with it.
Well, the last time, they won on this map.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, I think I will get the scout tower, but I will just not upgrade it until I see something, because I get a scout farm anyway.
Yeah, I play one base as well, I can feed lots of resources anyways.
Yeah. Human Orc. Oh, we don't have Fly on our side. It's elf and dead bottom, so in fear with expo, there is almost no chance that elf will harass, so maybe I skip tower entirely.
Elf, undead, so I go raiders like last time, I should have, I think. Like, on the Wellspring temple map, we played against undead elf as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Raiders would have done really well.
Yeah.
So I consider going raiding as well. So I consider going raiding as well.
Starbuck is even scouting the other side, nice. Okay, we just get a scout tower, but not.
But, yeah, elf, creeping, undead.
They might double the expo, remember, they love expos.
Yeah. Reason why to go raiders. He keeps losing the wisp.
Creeping together, what the fuck?
They're creeping together?
Yeah, the human and orc top are doing the expo together.
Alright, alright, alright.
Yeah. Holding each other's hands.
Right, that damage is very good info. Didn't see, you know the hero?
Sorry?
Um, Starbuck is asking which hero orc is playing, you know it, let's see. Red lord bottom.
Yeah, okay.
Nice, I will go raiders, it's so good, man.
Yeah, so I will double sanctum.
I sent you some wood, I don't need that, I read them.
It's the same as last time when we played on wellspring, with red lord also, right?
Yeah, exactly.
And I'm not sure what second hero we will see, uh, maybe alchemist. They just revealed me?
Ready?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm level 2.7 just.
Yeah.
To this spot.
They actually didn't take that many, actually. Oh my god.
Yes, I think yes, they, they think on. Ping equalizer.
Oh, they put the ping equalizer on that?
Yeah, I guess, because it's disync, I guess.
That's a bad idea.
I just guess.
I don't think so, wait, missed. Oh yeah, they did, we hired 140.
You're on, what? Nope. Uh, I cannot join?
Uh, it's 0-6.
Or R only, right?
It sucks, they like, the entire start, nothing.
Yeah.
Then again, I had a freaking crystal ball, so. Maybe we find something actually good this time.
I find it interesting, they both creep together the expo. You need help as well with the expo?
Huh, no. I would tilt if somebody came into me. What items you guys got, Buck?
I got ring and the strength plus 3.
Dude, I got crystal ball, maybe we get something decent this game.
Crystal ball was nice though.
Well, we, we know what they're gonna do, it doesn't really matter, I think. I'd much rather a claws or like something like that.
But, I don't know, man.
Good items.
Yeah, I, I had a tanky demon, basically.
If this guy keeps dropping, it's gonna get very irritating if they insist on like using the ping equalizer.
They insist on it for some reason.
Why, cuz they have shit being compared to us?
Yeah. Well, I mean, playing on 140 is decent though.
Yeah, that's true, it's weird. It's very good ping for them. Seems like there should be one more server, just a little on the east of Moscow, and it would be fun.
Uh, the routing is like real funny. The internet. I don't even know if that would change much.
You guys have fiber or not?
Yeah, I, I don't even know if my internet is fiber.
Did we go to start? Did he ask if you're ready?
No.
I moved to Starbuck.
But they put the equalizer again.
I call you. Okay.
What, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah. I, I have to mute you because I can't stand this echo, so just like when you, when you wanna say something. Uh, if you ever wanna go creep at some point, when I wanna push, just let me know. Generally, I think, if during the first fight we do well, we can just insanely snowball, probably. Cuz then you get statues. I changed this build, what? I'll give you evasion when we meet. Oh my gods, fucking Christ. Ah, they're just gonna keep insisting on this fucking ping equalizer.
Jesus.
How many regames we gonna have to do?
No more limbs, guys, no more ping equalizer. You, you guys had the best matchup as well, human undead against elf, human.
Feels bad.
It's a dream.
Yeah, I love it.
You always need to get one poison abo against that.
That sounds pretty amazing, actually. 0-7.
It disabled ping equalizer, it seems. It's China South now.
No, it's the default when you create a game lobby.
I see, okay, hope that, best for him, right, yeah, nevermind.
Oh, they want one more try on the ping equalizer, Jesus Lord Almighty.
No, he said this, we try not to start the balanced ping.
Fucking hell. You know what's crazy is that he, we're dropping early, imagine we have like a really sick game like last time, we're about to win and then he drops again.
20% Todd.
Yeah, funny thing, if he drops, we, we should play so loose that, that, that we are on the edge of losing and then he should. Or someone of us should drop.
No, but actually, um, if we lose, we should stay until the very end and then this can, we say 20%, bro.
Yeah. Last building.
Yeah. Then what? Wait, I, I'll watch replay if he did TC again. Sneaky, sneaky bucky. Oh my god, he did TC again.
They have good memories on.
Elf and human creeping expo together.
They are all, they, they, they creep on both, both sides together? It's always creeping together, the expo?
Yeah, everybody creeping together.
Francis asked me if I needed help to creep, I said if anyone shows up with any of my creeps, I'm gonna tilt the instant.
Yeah, I mean, you, you just creep together if you get a rest, 100%, if you're sure you get a rest from strong heroes. And this is never the case on this map, so I don't get it.
Well, I get the TC, TC creeps like shit, so it makes sense to creep together with the undead, but, human, elf, commandment, what the hell? AOE and melisha and they do together.
Yeah, but the thing is, like, i- if you play TC, you play TC grunts, you technically can still creep if there is enough small greens, like, he could do small greens, two small greens into expo or something, or orange. Cuz now, yes, he's creeping a little bit faster for himself, but he's slowing down his teammate.
If I go TC, I go mass raider for shockwave based raid. Billage must money. But, good thing he doesn't play that.
Think if a TC creeps alone to level 3, so his ally has level 3 in time, the TC needs probably two heal solves for the grunts.
Yeah, I mean, he can spread them out, like, if you creep really effectively. And get a shop early, you're fine.
Yeah.
I hope they don't start. No washing hands, 30 seconds.
30.
I'm back.
Welcome back.
Alright, let's play for 3 minutes and then we host.
I think he used the old launcher.
Didn't they discontinue that? Or I think, at least for 4v4 now, I think you have to have the new launcher.
Yes, you do.
You know freaking Crypto is playing like 30 games a day and he was still using the old launcher, he kept having joint bug.
So you guys change call?
Yeah.
Yeah. Good luck.
Good chance.
I think you can skip the scout door.
Scout farm?
Um, you don't need that thing.
Hell no, we're gonna get one here, right above my main.
Yeah, it's never bad.
Yeah, you just use a little bit of lumber, but because I take later expo, I can afford it easily. It was weird, like, the first game earlier where I got a crystal ball, like, I was scouting all expos, they were not taking many expos, only one per corner. Expos, they need to take more.
Nice, he's scouting again. So we have.
Undead orc.
Orc undead there. See, who's next to me? If it's undead, I could go for akharis. He wants to expand that badly. He didn't, and I can delay him a lot.
Don't get slipped around it.
Yeah, that's the thing. That's the only thing.
It's undead next to you. Fly in a warmel builds.
Good for the comp.
He's gonna scout the other.
Sick scout.
Yeah, that's really good scouting the next one play. Alright, DK fiends is not going out yet, so it must be DK, DK goes.
Okay, actually, I'm not gonna get defend.
Yeah, true. I think it's ghouls because it's fast DK, or that, that fiends could be as well. That's not coming. I'm in the space stacking, that fiends, it's that fiends.
Yeah, yeah, creeping together.
Yeah. And DK is back in the base.
Oh my gods!
It was so good start for me, really.
Fucking hell, huh? Well, at least we're going without ping equalizer now.
Yeah, he played TC, TC.
Man, I got freaking evasion item on my demon. I can go mana immolation build.
Man, it's so sick, like, their, their build was, I think, really unoptimal, they went like DK, TC and crept the expo together.
Yeah.
And I was gonna skip defense cuz they're not getting any piercing.
Yeah, orc human is nice against this.
That, um, infiblade, fast DK into fiends. And creeping the expo.
Yeah, but he, like, he wouldn't have many fiends when we get 3 and we push it, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we would have wrecked, I think. Yeah, we would have wrecked, I think. I also got, uh, kicked their shop, so they had no healing. But, didn't matter.
At last, no ping equalizer.
Well, they needed 5 games.
We gotta check the 20% after every game. The only way good to get it here is if one player does not mine. Early. Show me cool. Go.
I'm shot up.
Gonna call in.
I do one base.
So we do what we had said initially, right?
Yeah, you insta expo.
And actually, I think I can skip tower.
Yeah, because I'm scouting, let's see what they do.
They literally never harass, that would be 300 IQ if they rush me with 2 heroes. Then I can just not expo.
Yeah.
This scout is sick by the way, like you see all 4, we know everything.
Yep. I really don't get why nobody in our random team does this, like you get so much info.
They want more woods. The random team's special is I get level 3, I push my sides, 3 people come, and then I look at the other side, they haven't even crossed the map yet.
That's the special one indeed, yeah. Sure, by the way. They need to make a 3 vs 3 game mode, I feel like. Something fresh. Okay.
He's playing warmel this game. They keep changing build between game, what the?
Yeah.
Yo, Franka, merci pour votre aide. I guess I'm getting defend now.
Oh, Ring of Regen, hell yeah.
I found evasion. You wanna go burn, uh, emo?
To expo?
No, no, burn emo and I give you evasion, because I found evasion.
Okay, of course, of course, wait, why are you... Why are you not expanding?
Oh shit, yeah, my bad, nevermind.
I creep it, it's fine.
No, 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 it's best if you leave it, because that's my level 3.
Hmm, just creep something else. Too much time waste for me.
Uh, I'm gonna use some moon wells.
Uh, red or not? I'm low. Oh, these fellhounds are strong. Oh my god, I got double regen, holy shit.
Holy, and I have a ring as well.
Sick.
After you use all moon wells, like later, use the... On my, heal my footy.
Okay, sure.
Few minutes, they replenished. Should I move towards them or we creep level 3 first?
Yeah, go move towards them, I'm coming, we just, yeah, go, get that level 3 and go.
Dude, I got 3 items for you.
Sick. And leave some XP for me, I'm 2.9 as well, I just need one small creep.
I'm saving my mana for next battle.
Yeah, if you give me global, well, I'm walking here, but it's fine.
Yeah, we got it, right? Although you don't have it.
No.
I found so many items, what if I got too many items?
Wait, uh, don't, 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 uh, let's save creep it, okay, go. Uh, give me the slippers.
This motherfucker is picky.
Oh baby. I go mass riots, I delay tier 3. Let's snowball.
See shockwave 2 gonna show up? Okay, I move right, so can I get the shockwave? Okay, it's the keeper.
Oh, Todd, come on, bro. I'll find the orc, you just stay here. Yeah, it's TC. Oh, he's got no more mana.
Nice, fucking scary shit, he's dead. Save when you need golds.
TC?
I have no moon wells and it's almost daytime.
Okay, I get the headhunters. Dude, this demon is absolutely insane. I'm healing more than they're dealing damage to me though.
I sent a Sasquatch up to your base.
Yeah, thanks.
Nice. You need something from tavern?
I already have a panda coming.
The keeper has 1 HP. They're going desperate heal target.
Dude, like I'm healing so much, Todd.
Yeah, I see.
It's like a fountain, what the hell? Okay, riot spam coming, I need gold now. I'll make a triple roll, or we just bust them, actually.
Maybe give me one of the rings? Charge panda?
I'll just let it die.
Give him the ring, he can regen. Ready now?
I mean, 2 headhunters for a level 1 hero. Any day. Honestly, I'll just send the demon in, like, it's unkillable. Not even kidding. Oh my god.
Keeper is staffing somewhere?
More gold, if you can.
Got him.
Nice, more gold. Riots are flooding.
Holy shit, wrecking.
Insane, insane demon, man.
Let's go champ. Those rings, what the fuck, man?
Oh my god.
Uh, you guys won?
Yeah.
Is this a joke?
No, we won as well, very hard.
No, but like, Starbucks found 2 rings for the demon. So the demon was healing. Yeah, he was healing more than they were doing damage.
I had also 2 rings on the Death Knight, I was tanking so much.
But Ring of Regen?
Yeah.
Uh, no, just 2.
Yeah, we got 2 Ring of Regen, then I gave him evasion, then I gave him Ring of Protection.
And slippers.
Oh my god.
This demon was a machine.
Okay, that orc here.
You don't have to be scared to rush infi, because you goes swarm for not sleep.
What?
0:09.
I don't think that he will play this strategy again, they did so bad, that it's so bad.
They played aggro in one of the games on this map, right, I think? The first series that we played on this map, they played aggro on my expo.
And it was Happy and Fly, yeah, Happy with Fasia last time, exactly.
So we double orc here?
Yeah.
Okay, so, the communication through chat, if we have to base race, like just say base race, mode on or something.
The code word is lems.
And yeah, like, Buck, you call it, like, also if you wanna go for the timing on 50 where we have raiders and stuff.
Okay.
So you went burn emo?
Yeah, of course.
How much worse is talisman compared to evasion level 1?
Uh, talisman is 15%, evasion level 1 is 10%.
Wait, talisman is better than evasion level 1, what the?
Yes, yes.
What, talisman is not 50%?
15, yeah.
Ah, 15, okay.
I mean, imagine 50 though.
Dude, I will send my archmage in.
But it's, yeah, it's still crazy that it's better than skill.
Yeah, because it's better than level 1, but not level 2.
Yeah, but I mean, even the, like, the Endurance or drop item is better than a level 1 TC.
Manu undead.
Oh, it is, really?
Yeah, I mean, it was, I know it got nerfed, but before it was, for sure. It might even be still now, but yeah.
Yeah, that's a bit OP.
Okay, let's go.
The scout was so good, it was so good. Yeah.
Maybe they wanna try again?
But...
Wait, they left it on, wait, China North!
No, 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 yeah, it's fine, I play on this in Tecta, bro, it's decent.
We played China North ping equalizer?
No, 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 we don't play, he turned it off.
Yeah, but if you turn it off and it's China North, we have insane ping.
Yeah, so what?
Bro.
Yeah, I think they wanted to even it out. I'm left side.
Yeah, 150 is totally playable.
Same spawn that last time.
Oh, you got nice spawn, Todd, let the odda.
Actually, this point is not great for the act.
Listen to the shred now, Frenzy, you can, you headhunter, Frenzy.
Yeah, just like last time.
I fast stack and feed choker gold.
Yep.
Make altar, come on, go, go.
Then I have no headhunter to creep faster level 3, right?
You don't need to fast, you don't need to fast creep, fiends are enough. So yeah, I go raiders, I harass, early game, and then I'm probably going shadow hunter second, and we hero focus with choker. And based on, um, their expos. We will gather up if there's a situation for it.
But keep in mind, against dreadlord, don't get slipped. Sometimes it's make go slip, sometimes not.
Yeah. Okay, uh, let's do separate calls now, I'm calling choker.
Good luck, chaps.
What's your creep routes?
Um... I can play creep the mark, like we played last time, right?
Yeah, yeah, if you get...
Just I get level 3.
Yeah, maybe you should get the assassin, I think it's good. If you're like very careful with it, you don't lose it, I think it does a lot of damage with the poison, like you poison every single unit. I should, I should get more footies, it's just better.
I went for the accession on the against Fly and against the TC keeper, push, earlier. Or left side, I think. Shouldn't I go Harris? No.
Know how I like to play?
Yeah. That's why I'm creeping.
That's good execution so far today, we might just enroll them. Okay, I'll see on me. I need to change.
He's cross mapping.
Oh, really?
Our side is human, human and, and... Human elf left side.
Maybe I can't expo. Or maybe we need your help to creep it, maybe that's the point. Why they do this. They know I delay expo, so if you harass it...
Keep in mind, we have, one side on our side is human and elf, and I think it might be double expo, we develop push with level 3 for sure. So if you want to creep together, I can, I'm down.
Tell me, you can send my melisha yourself to the expo when you creep it.
Sure. 6.
You have shop, yeah?
Yeah, in the middle. In the middle.
It's so fucking lame, they host on their server, then like, it feels like it's a rastile.
Um, expo is prepped.
You ready to fill the burrows? Stay near my expo, because the other guy's gonna show up in a sec.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, she's fucking boss here when you can. Okay, humans here. Fill the burrow, thank god you have. Mining again. I haven't guessed that I have expo.
Yeah. Life still on Ostric.
Okay, follow this shit.
They didn't expo on our side, man.
I just got 3 here. Oh, they left my expo on us. So good for us, because, wait, they don't have expo?
No. Oh, 3, 3, 3, uh, it's just a party, they have to back off, just run, maybe.
We can fight.
Yeah, right, go.
I give you mana still. This quick? I will send you a bit of wood.
Yeah, it's okay, I think they will not push it soon, anyway. Let's push on the left.
Yeah.
With Starbucks, yeah.
There's the orc behind.
Is it spec?
Yeah, I can select my army.
That's wrong. I give you clarity on the...
This quick? Send a p on to the left to see if they are going to your main.
Yeah.
Anchor the walls.
Send the wolf, I'm sending wolf, yeah. And they go, uh, can creep together, whatever.
Okay. Maybe they're doing the red, but I think they're probably doing the lab.
They're creeping this, the human is creeping on the other side.
No, they are doing the reds, I think.
The human was creeping this, and Nadel was running around here, yeah. Oh, orc is still here. But careful, careful.
Yeah, we can't let them creep the red for free, so we just do them. We don't really wanna fight.
Yeah, there are three people here. They want to come, I think. The human is not here yet, but he will shine up.
He's coming behind fullback.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Ready to purge? Take me at my shop.
Yeah.
Oh, nicely. Is it four or three? Can you tell?
It's three, the other is missing. Careful, careful. We start to get engaged, I think. They want the nukia archmage.
One TP, two TP.
All TP, nice.
Yeah, use reason troll, come around.
You have gold, I go for dynamic grid hole.
Yeah.
Nice, we can go for red spot. Choker wants to creep red spot.
Yeah.
Um, even I go shredder as well.
Ah, no, no, I have enough. If you need wood, just leave me now.
Um, yeah, sure, wood.
You did?
Um, orc is going shaman, I think. Thank you, man. Alright, let's go here. I bullet. Yeah. I can give you ring on Banda as well.
Yeah.
Shit, didn't work. Let's get next expo, right?
Yeah. Just try producing knights. We don't, we could technically delay the fight a little bit.
We can force TP of the elf, I think. Uh, hard to say. Ah, it's three people, TP out, TP out. Three people. I bet you.
Ah, they've been through the whole game.
Yeah, it's good.
Very irritating.
Yeah, we have triple expo though, so nice. We have no... It's giants out now. Not sure if we should ever fight again as a four team. Yeah, let's go.
Okay, let's defend, let's defend.
You sure they got chance?
They say we base race?
Not yet, but it's two people.
My expo is gonna die in one second.
Yeah, base says.
Yeah, 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 okay. I guess, good.
Yeah, they want to, they want to trade as well, I think. We can stack one expo, it's good. I have expo up.
Who's tipping?
Ah, he should run, he should run, he should. He should just run, but... He lost nothing. Someone need to TP here. Undead. Undead is defending everything.
Yeah.
We can't fight up, I'm not sure. Uh, starback doesn't want, don't, probably want to fight.
Yeah, we don't fight, he said base race.
Yeah. That's good. We don't have to fight, we have such a good gun.
The end is on me though, no?
Yeah.
Undead tipping. Ah, that's sick, cuz I can kill a human now.
House.
But I'm dying in my base.
I go for dynamic grid three as well. We need resources, just tell me, I'm free expo now. Someone need to be pinged. Light is dying here, maybe. I can give you dynamic grid hole. Come.
Okay. One sec, go set it up. What the fuck, you expended top left?
Yeah.
Starback has my tower, he's on his expo on the right side.
Let's go. Are you ready to fight devil?
Yeah, I'm on my way. Uh, we have to site the expo top.
I still orc here, I think.
I don't think we can fight here. I have no army. I mean, I lost everything.
Alright.
Fucking seize me with the entire team, this is ridiculous. Damn, too bad choker TP'd here, it was such... We called base race and he still TP'd.
That's fine, they have, they have no, they have nothing left. We can go for the orc, maybe.
Being a main. We have to buy more time. But also, we cannot be in position. I'm gonna creep one more camp here. I wanna get standard three.
Yeah, I'm running so much time here.
Oh my god. This guy just fed me mass XP. We can fight the elves together. TP to your expo, maybe. Repair it and TP there. I'm on my way.
I'm, I'm on, I kill it, yeah. Someone is TP'ing here. Go, 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 go. That's a little good. I'm on TP to the human.
And there.
It's good.
Let's go up.
Yeah. I need a TP though.
Okay, get one.
Yeah, yeah. I hope it's not caught out. Yeah, exactly.
Okay, elf is here. You might not be alone. I'm retaking now, so it's gonna be a while, but then I can make breakers. Then I will have more gold left over, cuz that was my main.
Yeah, let's see if there's more people. They have no expos at all. Sending wolves to the human. Human is not. We can kill the human main, maybe.
No, stay, stay, stay. We can force two here.
Yeah, I'm sending wolves onto the human.
They're gonna have to TP. What the fuck is this place? Okay.
We can fight, man, I think.
Can we?
Yeah. I'm not sure.
I don't think so.
We can try. We could try. We could try. It's free, it's free, it's free.
I will heal you.
I'll be, I'll be out. Free. You can buy another dynamic grid hole if you want. On my, it's... It might all enough.
Yeah.
But we don't care, we just keep learning. But I would not, if you, if you buy, uh, dynamic, I would not place it yet. I mean, yeah, they want to fight so badly.
Ah, they're not going. They're places.
Because they have no expos. I mean, set up the dynamic, just do it.
Hey, go back.
It's just health.
Yeah, but human is a little bit right side, so he could easily walk. I'm on my way to you.
Yeah.
I see to buy more time, then once I have like fifty supply of breakers, we're gonna smash those guys. Now I have zero breakers and they lose.
It's both.
You can run. Yeah, just keep running.
I should. I should run.
My tier two is about to finish, but I have no gold, cuz I just bought it, I mean. Maybe we stand at your expo. If they attack the expo, why, why the fuck you have two stables? What the fuck? Let them attack the buildings, then we engage.
We should kill, we should ignore the giants. Ah, okay. Go, 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 go.
Okay, you TP.
Anyone need wood?
You need?
No, no, I shut up. I feed you wood.
No, I have.
Now blow up the human main base.
Watch out, watch out units on the left.
Thank you.
Don't run in, don't run in. They're both standing there. Pull back, pull back, pull back. Too dangerous. They're both there. Yeah, you're gonna get caught really badly. Just go back, go back, go back. Don't engage.
I have balls here, yeah.
We fight with the towers if they come, I guess.
Alright. And try to ignore them giants and kill the backland.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any army.
Okay, then we should back. You have no army.
Set three trees.
You can, I think, set up more dynamic grid holes. I, I can, you got both expos.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good.
I think you can use all your resources, I have so much wood.
I'm retaking to castle.
I retake this one as well.
Yeah. They have to TP right side, I think.
Let's go here. Left side. Keep up the brush.
Maybe I think I would go human. You go night elf?
I'm not sure. Okay.
Was there someone? We're pulling back.
I don't know, we are just late.
Orc is here. It's two orc and elf.
I killed the...
Watch out, go back. Ah, you can't anymore, right? What you call him? I'm coming to you.
Yeah.
Oh, mine, I go back. Yeah, run immediately. You should have TP to your expo, cuz then you would already be going. Run up immediately.
Yes, coming. They will not push my expo. Go.
We can fight, maybe.
I have spikes free.
Yeah, that's good, that's good, that's good. The fuck happening by main? This is damage. Now this push will be scary.
Let's push this side. I probably kill giant enemy. Fighting alone.
Most many giants are gonna die against blizzards.
Human behind though.
Yeah.
It's end is. The dive me half, I have to TP out, I think. I have TP out. I have TP?
I took one MG.
Should we keep deft, deft expo?
Yeah, so it's cold.
Yeah.
And the MG is gonna take so much damage from spikes, actually. Amazing. Okay, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna start producing knights now, in a sec.
Human is TP'ing. He's shot the elf now.
Okay, nice. Go, 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 go. Catch this fool. I'm running there.
Yeah, I stepped.
Let's go, Chen. One China hose, baby. Talking about.
Nice game.
Okay, I'll go restroom one second.
Yeah.
Nice lames, boys.
You guys enjoyed my towers on each expo?
Yeah, that's nice.
Not even thinking about retaking that expo.
Check resources and check infi's gold mine. Nine K. I think I killed gold mine three or four times, and my base tier three.
Yeah, it was nice to not fight this army. Just delay them. They have like this one trick army they want to fight with, and we dodged it.
Yep.
And afterwards, we're getting a better army.
Oh, it's three zero already, we won already, right?
Yeah.
Oh, but actually, that was a good game. Uh, I mean, better than the two games before.
Yeah, they always needed three on each side, and at some point, they had no gold anymore.
Starback, can you do me a favor?
Yeah.
Can you explain to choker what base race means, please?
Ah.
No, 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 no. It, it, the, the situation changed, and we could easily defend your expand.
Yeah. Cuz they, they reacted very quickly and they TP'd, so you guys could three with three at your expo, but it was already so low HP that...
It's against MGs, so...
Yeah.
That's the worst part.
But it, it didn't matter, he just went back, so...
It didn't matter for you, motherfucker. I lost both my bases.
No, 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 no. I was kiting against three and find pickup, so it was not...
Do you know how I remake my bases, by the way? Two times tiny.
You were taking tier three again, what the hell?
Yeah, cuz I, I was making knights at the end. I had fifty supply breakers and I was making, but I tiny'd twice. Frenzy's giving me a tiny, then I bought another tiny, so I expended so... Francis gave me a tiny, then I bought another tiny, so I expanded super fast twice.
Oh, shit. Nice.
That was a K move. We are expanding then. I was also expanding, and it was nice.
Uh, what race? Elf or orc?
Up to you, man. You're the caller. Francis, what do you think?
I think...
I think orc, no? Damn, I'm gonna play TC grunts, bro. Let's go orc.
Is Francis FK?
Oh.
I think Francis FK.
Sick, sick. I go toilet.
Yeah, it felt like they were breaking slowly but surely last game eventually. You guys did really well right side. It was really odd, actually. Like, I was attacking, I had a shit army. Because I only had like tier two stuff. Then I was beige racing Yumiko's base, and the undead came and he had destroyers, and I still traded somewhat against him. And bought a lot of time. And Francis made two towers at both of their expos on the left side, so they literally couldn't even expo. That was actually... Really sick.
We're back on EU East 5 now.
Yeah, we're not pinging.
I'm back.
Okay, ready?
Um...
Shocker, you ready? Shocker went to toilet.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm back.
Okay.
Ready? So, the plan is TC grunts, send it to what?
No. If I get a good spawn, it's TC, but if I am with you, I go first here, hurt hunter.
Okay. But like, if you're on the other side, uh, whether you spawn on the corner or not?
Inside TC, outside first here.
I think you want to style around with double orc, because the games with elf were too easy. Last game was so nice.
Yeah, man. Lames are always nice.
This is a good map for beige race style too.
It is, it is. TC is exceptional on this map. So many paths and expos.
I got shot at the early last game. It was really nice.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is the best map for TC until...
One of the best. I don't think it's the best.
Yeah, but the maps before were not like this.
Ready up, boys? Get the 5-0.
I say fly off.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have to play good now. Last time we were leading 3-0 as well.
They give us a spur way again.
Yeah, that means island map will be on the...
TC grunt here.
I moved top.
I love TC grunt buffins.
Um, top, you want to...
I think I will one base most likely.
Fast death knight or fast feet?
Just make buildings, bro. You decide.
I will footman scout, I think, everyone, so that we have an idea.
Alright.
I have a feeling orc is next to me. I go feet.
I will go fast expand.
You?
Yeah. I mean, you can as well if you want inside.
No, no, no.
Okay, I call Shocker again.
Let's go.
I mean, if you want, I can send your militia over and creep it for you.
No, no, I don't think it's that necessary. Like, I actually like playing one base when I get...
Alright.
I'm very good with it. I already have a clear idea of how I wanna play this.
Nice. Don't forget to shield. And by the way, your spawn is, your expo spawn is packed. It will always summon.
Yeah.
I still get scout tower, because last game, a wisp here.
Footman, human.
I might actually play castle one base. And play like, I would play in human mirror if I go castle with like a knight, priest, mortar.
If my expo goes up.
He loves breakers. If I do that, like, in 1v1, it's not even close.
If my expo goes up, I feed you.
Yeah. Surely it's...
Yeah.
Oops. Okay, human's creeping expo.
Alright. I get level 3 and enemy pushing.
So we get defense. Yeah, our push is gonna be absolutely insane, because he delayed the expo as well. Unless he's taking at the same time, but I don't think it's very likely.
He's still level 1.
Yeah, yeah. Nothing's creeping out very good.
Alright, let's replan this road push.
Let's do the merc camp.
Level 3, yeah.
The merc would be amazing.
Yeah. I have the merc as well.
I think I will buy this one. Holy shit, those items. I think maybe give me the items.
Not sure.
Okay, he's here.
Hot switch.
He's... He's running past everything. Oh my god, we're gonna wreck them.
And I'm buying shredder as well. We have 100... Ah.
100 redwood?
No, no, it's 100. I'm...
Okay, he's here, he's here. Fight, 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 fight!
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm gonna shovel two, what the fuck?
He's not expanding.
He just cracked it. Looks like a...
I will dis for the footman.
Need to buy panda, leave the... Oh, fuck. Wait, is that? It's three outside.
Yeah.
Oh yes, he's gonna entangle me. Oh shit, he didn't have the range. Ah, this is really bad. The other side's not even pushing, fuck.
It's fine, man.
I lost panda with full mana, like...
Alright.
What's going on?
Go back, because we can... I, I stop, I can see we can fight. Think I can run back. So...
Let's do the this, and then we do the middle.
I have shredder, I have expo, you can, I can feed you what.
Yeah. Stay close, get four, get four. We just par creep together, everything now.
Alright.
And then, uh, I think Starbuck's gonna create a lot of space. Yeah, so I'm not playing castle this game.
I'm sure.
Does that think? Yeah.
I make a shop in your base, you can go dining grid on again. Shredder's coming.
Fuck, he's in your expo.
Oh.
Go defend, you go defend. Stay here.
If you did all things.
I gotta score the business.
My shop is up at your expo in a second.
Yeah. When I creep my expo, I think. Do, do, do this to us. Do this.
Yeah, okay.
When I do my expo, then we go. This is gonna line up very well.
Can you send a footman to Yumiko's expo, just to make sure it's not expanding?
I only have one and he's low HP, so no, not right now.
Alright.
You can use revelation if you really wanna do.
I will send a wolf, it's fine. So much wood for you.
When are you tier 3?
In a second, 5 seconds.
You can send back the pion. Okay, human is here. He might be headed for me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, he's creeping and I'm almost done.
Yeah, tiny max.
I'm coming to you now.
Yeah.
Oh, human is here. They're both here.
On my way. Oh shit. I'm behind them. Go, go, go.
Yeah, the test diving me, I test run.
I TP. He's dying.
I'll feed him a bit, add some resources to him. And don't forget to tower at your expo.
I will push with them, I think.
Yeah, upgrade the towers at the expo.
Yeah. Force my morte TP here. Oh, he dropped, harassing me with the... Maybe he needs injuries or something.
I killed both elephant heroes. I can defend you.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I killed the elephant now. Remake your button. Let's do him.
The fuck is this? Everybody's in mic?
Yeah, I'll kill the panda again. Oh, lol, your expo survives.
Lol.
Oh, they failed.
What the fuck, he's TP'ing his expo? This guy. What do you know?
I give you lots of gold. He opened this path, if you want to block it.
Yeah, I'm coming. Getting knights now. Forgetting units, anyway.
Yeah.
On my way.
There's both.
Okay, can't max expo, can't max.
Yeah, I'm running around. Maybe you can block them out. Not sure if we can, I can do.
Okay. Yeah, they can't go through. I don't think they can go through this.
Time your goal, I feed you a lot more. Ah, Shocker is so dead as well.
They might be going around like through bottom. I got mass knights producing. No, they're still camping.
It's just, it's just the elf, human, it's just human. I go around. I will go around.
Then we gank him. You have two pions at max when you have one berserker, I send it to your army.
I'm here, man. Ready?
Go, go, go. His second one TPing. Probably see no one.
Shot them. Can you hang them up? It's fine.
He doesn't have expo?
No.
It's fucking terrible for them. Oh my god, he's losing all farms too. Nice! Oh my god, these Persians, what the fuck?
I'm down with.
Maybe someone else is TPing and we can't see. Oh my god, what the fuck?
Dead.
Should we have re-TP maybe?
Oh, fuck, I didn't.
Karakomich died.
I heal you, I heal you, I heal you.
Yeah, pull back a bit, pull back a bit. The tower has no effect.
Can you kill the breaker? Nice.
Yeah, I got my snipe now, so, fucking love.
Maybe we can kill the giants.
Yeah, 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 honestly, it's just attack move, like, the army is gonna do its job itself, losing nothing. I don't need a fire on this. Nobody else TPing.
Let's go lightning shield. I'm targeting my lightning shield, man. I'm A D supply, then lose A D single unit.
Use some wood if you have. How the fuck do you not have wood?
I'm more purges. I'm more purges.
I'll play. Karakomich just came back. He's running down. Prince, he by the way for a while.
Um, you asked me why I have no wood, I've had shaker kind of.
Yeah. I sent him some, what the fuck is this guy doing? Passing the entire map on food.
Eight zero kills, lord.
Yeah, those purges look funny as hell. Cause literally trucks, probably shouting on their voice, help me!
Yeah, I, I cannot imagine how he shouted after the failed TP.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Aye, aye, aye.
Let's go champ.
I think I killed ten bases or more.
My TP was good, right, on the right side, I think I, it just felt like shocker needed.
What, Choker didn't?
Yeah, yeah.
You just said Choker didn't?
No, I said, I, I thought shocker needed, so I TP'd on the right side, cause I saw you were alone versus two. And then it's funny, I TP'd and one guy without even knowing who was TPing, he TP'd out instantly.
Yeah, I think it was good that you came once, I think it was good.
You know, I lost a lot inside of undead base, but it's, it's like creating space a bunch.
Ah, I, I hit a lot of, of fly, which brings me back into the game to, against infi, because infi had a good early against me, it was very difficult. But when you join me and fight the undead, I killed so much from fly, and then my heroes got strong enough to fight infi again, and Starbuck just played perfectly and got, feed so much.
Tiny in my expo again, by the way. Fucking, Aziz made a tiny in my, and he created like new meta for human.
What an abuser.
He was so fast. I was getting it.
Uh, eleven. Soon Todd will start buying heal scrolls from the workshop, he will really turn to the dark side. Tannis and speed scrolls.
Actually, I, I've been buying speed scroll every time I can.
Yeah.
Using the shit.
Dude, how, how, how was this item fifty gold, man, for years?
Yeah, I mean seventies too. It's cheap for what it is.
Ah, it's not, oh my god, I was like that, we got five zero, but we got four zero.
China North now, the final test on the map that we lost last time.
Yeah, I go elf now.
Hey, Shocker, I don't see a ping, is that, no?
True.
Anyone else?
Don't see it though.
Yeah, it's.
Maybe reconnect?
Yeah, I have to reconnect.
I'll be right back in a sec. Alright, I'm ready. So I guess Fly probably stomp here. If he plays similar to last time.
Yeah, I guess. I will, um, already scout again and then see what hero I go. Cause on this map you can buy purge, so keeper can be utterly useless.
Yeah. So if my side is pushing and the other side you guys go creep, let me know, so that I can be more careful.
Oh, we're going crazy on our side, so don't you worry. Where is Shocker, come on, stop delaying. The inevitable five zero.
Show me the money, baby!
Finally, this fucking, this fucking launch.
Ready your boys, Aziz, you here? Aziz?
Yeah, I'm ready. Go, go. Let's do it, boys, five zero. Type, Shocker, type, ready, okay, nevermind. I did, I did.
Let's go champ.
I would like to be inside with human now, Todd. Like, uh, undead humans.
I think he, man.
I think we were never together.
And we've stopped back here, and it's exactly what we, we want.
Uh, do, can I put air over here?
Um, you can put it at the end of bottom, yes.
Uh, okay, you will control my wisp.
Yeah, I put it in the location.
Alright, let's go, boys.
I call you after you place engine on four.
Okay, before, before you leave the conversation, should I do this, or should I clean this for the other side?
Yeah, you should.
Okay, I clean, okay.
In middle, alright.
Control this wisp and put it where?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, yeah, sharing.
Pretty far away though, I mean, it's fine.
Here?
Yeah, here.
Oh my god, dude, that's so far away, are you kidding me?
Yeah.
I'm sure there's a more optimal close position than this.
You, I think you can skip archer.
No, I'll just creep a green spot.
Alright.
Oh, quest died.
Oh, let's go now. Calling.
So undead orc bottom, it's a shocker.
Yes.
So should I go MK second, that's the question. Hmm, I know if he's playing this side, then I go and end up for sure.
What? What? We'll see. Wait, what hero did the orc have? TC?
I'm not sure I should get defended against this. Cause it seems like they, maybe they, do we know the undead hero? Yeah. I think I would just tech, then maybe I play like, I don't make so many footies and no second racks, so then I will have the advantage of tech compared to usual. Meaning that I can feed you more in earlier. Shit. Oh, he didn't do the lab? Oh, I left it on purpose. Okay, I'm gonna go do it, and I'm gonna scout with illusion. Oh shit, they're coming. Oh my god, mana pen and TC. You need to come fast. I'm gonna lose my shit quick. Oh my god, he missed completely! Ah, this fucking ping. Check this, if they did it? Uh, yeah, one sec. Okay, let's go back, I think, fuck. I really wanna get shredder, like, this is gonna fuck me so bad not to have it, I have no woods, actually, send some wood back. Come get clarity and regen pool. I use it. Bring your DK to my arc. Getting MK. Okay, pull back, pull back, I really wanna get that shredder, like. Good life changer. Come here, come here. Okay, they just stay there, defend. He has double creeps. Yeah, one sec. On my way. There's a scroll, yeah, yeah, come, there is a scroll. Uh, nothing else? What the fuck is their goals in my expo, this guy is so annoying. I'm going double sanctum, I'm not sure if he's tried all, but I will try this. He's going large, actually, holy shit. That would be so good for us. Okay, undead is TPing to his expo here. Or orc, actually. I'm buying a ton of time. Let's go push whenever you're ready. Thanks on you, I go to his main then. Is there two, watch out, TP, I think. Yeah, rejoin me, you should have TP to my main maybe even, rejoin me immediately, then we go, or you wanna go mid? Oh, they're running down, actually, shit, I'll pull back. Yeah, come group up with, oh, he's three! The fuck? Uh, undead is here, fuck. What? Like, why am I alone? I don't understand, why do you, you're alone? Yeah, now I have to TP. Stay with me. Yeah, but, uh, you let me get caught by two now, and then now they're still in my base. Yeah, I'm not going jirus. Oh my god, who's mark mage? Where are you? What the fuck? There's two on me, I called it for like five minutes! Yeah, we'll transition into jirus. Back, back, back. Kinda hard to go lane when they're already in my base. Yeah. Don't have a choice. Spikes.
Well, whatever. Yes, my lord. At once. Your honor.
Yes, me lord.
Yes, my lord. Well?
What? Righto.
What is it now? Your honor. Well? Our forces are under attack. Command me. Get on with it. Brilliant. What is it now? What is it now? Get on with it. Our allied town is under siege. Your honor. I swear it.
More work? Alright.
Our forces are under attack.
Off I go then.
Move it! It shall be done, as you wish. What is it now? You require my assistance? Hardly wait. Get on with it. It shall be done. Get on with it.
What is it?
You require my assistance? What is it now? For honor. Get on with it. At your call. You require my assistance? Perfect. What is it now? Fine. Well? What is it now? Get on with it. Well? Whatever. I'm coming through. You require my assistance? What is it now? I can hardly wait. Well? You require my assistance? Get on with it. Whatever. Hold him away, brilliant! Well? Well? It shall be done. You require my assistance? Hold him away! Get on with it. Brilliant! You require my assistance? Whatever. Well? I can hardly wait. Get on with it.
What are you doing? Nice, holy shit! Holy stuff! Boom! Let's go champ! Nicely played.
Thank you. GG.
That was fucking hard, that one was really hard. Like, we started base racing when they were in my base, I was like, okay, we're fucked.
Sacrifice, we sacrifice a tier 3 human base and a tier 3 undead base. That's always a difficult decision and still win.
Yeah, but we double orc, we had no, oh no, actually, we didn't have a bloc.
Yeah. I ju- I just needed time for, uh, money to get my MGs out.
I had no army, just feeling good.
Yeah.
There's always a moment, they walk from base to base, killing one base, and we say sacrifice everything, but they get split it, and sometimes it's just two, and then I, and then I think one of you join and we just defend, but, yeah.
Yeah, when he was not present, you guys should defend undead base, for sure.
They start playing crazy at the end, like, it makes almost no sense, they just group up so early and then fight and stuff, like, for no reason.
They've seen the pushing all in bottom, so.
Yeah.
That was very smart play. That's why we won.
Rarely elf can carry.
Good job, guys.
Alright, well played, guys. See you later, congrats.
Well played.
Yeah, GGs, good job, boys.
Peace. See you next week.